Open the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone could stand and join us in that, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Okay. Next order of business is public comments. Do we need public comments this evening? No? Okay. All right. Next up are some minutes. The first minutes are from our meeting of February 4th. We move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of February 4th, 2020, as shown. Give a second.
Second. I actually had a question about the comment that was made about the CVS sign. Did we end up being able to verify that it is a legal sign, obviously? That it was, remember the unenforceable-enforceable thing?
Yes, we have.
Oh, you missed that. You might have missed that one.
There was this question whether it was enforceable.
Whether or not the sign was, some, the woman that was here last week said in her comments, or two weeks ago, said in her public comments that that sign, former police chief Cochrane told her that that sign is an enforceable sign.
What the chief at the time said was unenforceable. They had put a no left turn sign up in the parking lot of CVS. And because it was on private property, a sign that's on private property that says no left turn is unenforceable by the local police department. So what they have, what they then did was move that sign across the street. Took a long time to get it moved across the street. It was across the street for a few, for a couple of months and it got knocked over by a plow back, I think during the bad storm season. Never was returned until fairly recently when it was put up again. So now there's no left turn out of CVS, which is in accordance with the findings of the planning board at the time.
Right.
The current sign that says no left turn in was one that was added to the conditions at the time that CBS was approved way back, but never put up. Then they just recently put it up when they were sought after, some details based on the Jimmy McDonald development ongoing. That's my understanding of the history.
That's exactly.
So is the sign not on private property, though?
It's on a sidewalk.
Current one is on public property.
So because it was unenforceable before because it was on public?
Because it was on private property. It was in the CVS parking lot on the right-hand side. And it said no left turn. And it was on CBS's private property, so it was not enforceable by the local police department.
Okay. We will double check that it's still enforceable.
So now you can't turn left into CVS?
Now you can't turn left.
Correct.
Or left out.
Correct. There's no lefts at all.
Okay, no lefts at all. All right, does anybody have any other questions about the minutes of the 4th?
No, it's good.
No? Yes, maybe? No? Okay. All those in favor of accepting those minutes? Okay, we also have the minutes of the joint budget meeting of February 8th. And the motion is to accept and approve the February 8th, 2020 minutes as shown. Give a second.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Any comments about the minutes of the 8th? I wonder, do you think that the other two committees have their own minutes?
They're supposed to. And I forwarded this draft, because it's the same.
Right, yeah, no.
So I reminded them, because the town clerk reminded me, that each individual body should approve their minutes. They said that they, Ken Astropuk replied that he would do that. And then Colleen from the school department said she would do too, so she can do it.
All right, who was in favor of accepting those minutes? Thank you. Correspondents' items are A through I. Make a motion to accept and approve the hanging correspondence items, A through I, as shown. Give a second.
Second.
Any comments or questions regarding those?
I got a comment. I'm gathering it's the same resident that sent us that note.
Kathleen Kendra?
Yeah, the person that came.
She attended the last meeting.
Yeah, so a couple of things, I don't know if you guys had an opportunity to read that note, but there are a lot of points that she's making there. That I think it's something that we should kind of be aware of them, especially the areas where she talks about real problems. But she's talking about the presence downtown. I think that's what she meant by beat cop, downtown presence by the police. And also, the speed is something that I think, I've been bringing that up many, many times, that, you know, there's a lot of, you know, it's not being enforced. People are not driving 25 miles an hour on Main Street. That's a lot of times coming into town from outside, you'd be surprised. And the other thing is she's talking about the parking lot behind CBS. And I know there's been talk about that, changing the sign there to 10 miles an hour and if that's going to be enforceable. But it is, gets bottlenecked behind, you know, by Subway and Pepper's store there. So I think she's bringing some good points.
Okay.
The last piece that she's, and I'm just highlighting some of the areas, the one thing that she's claiming is that we have too many rentals downtown. And based on a lot of my, you know, information that I've gathered throughout talking to other consultants in downtown areas, it's their old adage, build it and they will come. Because she's talking about we don't have enough businesses, but we have a lot of rental properties. Well, the way you build, bring businesses in is if you bring in population. So by bringing in residents, you build it, they will come, the businesses will follow. So I guess that's my comment in regards to what she's saying there. Anyway, so that's just some of the highlights that I brought up from my note.
I appreciate, and it's good points. I can share this with the police chief if he hasn't already seen it.
Yeah. It's something I talked to Chief Dubon in the past about, that speeding area.
Okay.
And I don't know if you read the letter about the marijuana bill, proposed marijuana bill?
Yeah, that is part of the reason why we should not divert away from what the rules are.
Thank you. Yeah. But I also don't, I, obviously, taking the power away from municipalities to negotiate, I don't like that idea.
It's because too many municipalities weren't doing it right.
Is that what's going on?
Yeah.
Yeah, they got, and.
So they were taking advantage of theirs? Okay.
Yeah. And so, you know, they kind of, everyone gets punished.
Yeah, that's what happens.
But I got a lot of confidence in our legal counsel, Kefir Roffner, that we're doing the right thing.
I think that's what, you know, over the meetings that I've seen the past year, one thing that's really stood out is the fact that we are, it appears to other towns that we're a more, we have a more conservative approach, but the reason we have, like, we're not going for this and this and this and this. We could get from them. But the reason we don't do that is because you're not actually allowed to. So we're very conservative when it comes to that, because we want to make sure that we're doing the right thing.
But we do ask for the max we're allowed to.
That we're allowed to, absolutely.
Right. But I don't think they're questioning that part.
Right.
That's not the ones that, that's not, they're not questioning there.
No.
Be interested to see what the, from the MMA, what the, you know, what the violations are, like, what people are not adhering to, what changes, you know, what kinds of changes they're making within the scope of the control commission's approval process.
My understanding is that they, some communities are asking for kind of extra things beyond the 3%. So they might ask for a donation, or they might ask for, you know, contribution, or to pay the parking lot, or do something like that. And I think that's, they're trying to crack down on that kind of thing.
They do.
Although, you know, we don't want to take any power away from the municipality, I don't think, I don't, I don't think this would affect us, because we really have just been kind of on the straight and narrow regarding our impact fees.
We went to a breakfast, you remember, we went to that breakfast in Concord? And they, the guy was, the guy was telling us, that's how we should do it.
That was the.
Right?
That was, that was the planning breakfast. That wasn't about marijuana.
But he was saying, anything you do, you should be looking for those things.
That's fair. This is much more sensitive to.
Right, right. But he wasn't, he wasn't, he wasn't limiting his comments to what the subject matter was. He was saying, if you go over this, try and get that done.
Now, that's a development agreement.
That's a whole different story.
And so when they go to the planning board and they want to redevelop, like, the old bowling alley, then they're going to have certain things they have to satisfy for the development of the building. They host a community agreement. One, you're correct, that anything should definitely be spelled out in the agreement so we can keep them to it. But we can't go above and beyond what the law allows us to do. And that's what some communities have.
Well, see, this is how I interpret it, by the way. Because I was thinking, we're not going to be able to, you know, negotiate or mitigate for certain things, is, you know, that's, I guess.
If this, if this proposed goes through, it might be the case. I hope it doesn't, though.
Well, I think the town could still, the way I interpreted it was that the town could still ask for certain things. But the real ultimate judge as to whether or not they get it is not the agreement between the town and the marijuana facility, but the state, who makes the decision as to whether or not it sort of is fair.
It would, yeah, and that would be.
They have the ultimate decision as to whether or not it is going to be approved.
And it would, and that would, I mean, they're already so behind.
Oh, did you see the number? Did you see the number that they were talking about? Some ridiculous amount of.
I don't, I don't think there's a problem if someone comes in and they want to build a new building in a particular spot, and you ask for some sort of mitigation based on that building? That's fine. But the issue is, I think, the issue that you're talking about is communities tying the mitigation to the license, not to the, not to, not to the building things.
It's like a pay-to-play.
So they have 437 pending still?
Oh, did you?
Yeah, pending licenses still?
You're right. 437, you're right. 258 are in the approval stage. Hopefully, a couple of ours are in there.
All right, so any other questions on the, those items, those nine? All those in favor? Thank you. Consent items. Confirmation.
Yeah. Congratulations.
All right.
Yay. A little exciting.
Motion to accept and approve the three consent agenda items, A through C, as shown. Give a second.
Second.
Thank you. That's quick. Okay, any questions on these? I think that's, two of them are, two of them are just repeats, annual repeats, right? Crow Park and the parade? And the proclamation for Mr. St. John?
Yay.
Justine, are you going to present it to your son?
I have been advised I should be a parent that day, so if someone else would like to attend to present.
I would be more than happy to come along if the date works. I just have to look at the date.
Eight was what, March 8th?
March 8th, yes.
And if it's, if it doesn't work for you, just let me know.
Yeah, all right. I'll have it on my, I think, right now, I'm okay, I think.
Okay. So all those in favor of the three correspondents? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Want to lead us into the fire station building committee, sir?
Yeah. So we've had a couple volunteers for the fire station building committee. And as far as well as the chief is more than happy to be on the fire station building committee to get a fire station. So that's great, because that means, it's not a requirement to have the fire station building committee in place before Ascentown meeting for the appropriation to fund for the construction of it. But it's, it is helpful, and it's, it's most towns, and it is a good, good practice to have some sort of committee oversight of the progress of the building. Now, that, that being said, the building is 90, probably more than 90% designed, and a lot of the details have been worked out. But just like any other building project, there might be snags along the way, so it's good to have the committees provide a little bit of oversight. And, and also, it means not everything has to come back to this body. It doesn't have to always come back to the board. It can be up for the fire station building committee. The volunteers, you know, we try to get people who have not been a member of committees necessarily in the past, and so, or reached out to, to see if anyone would be interested. So some, some of these members are relatively newer to the town, or want to get involved with the town. I think this is a great first step. And I haven't even met all of them. You must be Mr. Boardman?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, so the individuals that we've reached out to, they're here this evening. Mr. McCully, Phil McCully, with the hat. Mr. Sidney Boardman here in the front. Mr. Bruce. So Elliot Bruce here. The three gentlemen that have been kind enough to show up this evening, get coffee with me, except for Mr. Boardman, I wasn't able to get coffee with him.
Elliot, you're here? Hi. Nice to meet you.
Yeah. And so they're willing to volunteer.
They're in.
I like that.
So, I mean, we don't, do we need, we don't, I mean, do we need to grow them? No, I don't think so.
And you're looking for four members?
I mean, five is, four is what we'll have with this. Five, I think, is a good number. But it doesn't, this is good. This is a good number.
Okay.
If we have, if someone else wants to get on board, of course, we can do it.
Feel free to recruit.
Yes.
Of anybody to join you.
All right, so there is a motion to, and it is, motion to appoint Fire Chief Anthony Stowers, Residence Phil McCully, Sidney Boardman, and Elliot Bruce to the Fire Station Building Committee, with terms to expire June 30th, 2022. And, do a second.
Second.
All right, does anyone have any questions for any of the three gentlemen that are here?
We want to thank you for volunteering. I think it's a, it's going to be a great project.
Thank you very much for volunteering. I know the chief will be happy to, have you guys all met the chief?
All right.
He's reaching out to them, he's going to try to schedule a time for them. Have you been in the fire station yet, Elliot? Okay, so we're going to show the old fire.
Oh, yeah. You got to see the old fire station.
Yeah, yep.
I don't mind serving it as the liaison if you guys are not opposed to that.
That's okay. We already, we already did that once, in August.
Yeah, we've been trying, this is our.
Oh, because you're trying to get the committee together.
So in August, I think we appointed you liaison already, for the Fire Station Building Committee. Because I was looking through some.
I didn't have a committee then.
Yesterday, it was August. But anyway, so yeah, so you are the liaison. So the, you will have to come to Town Hall and see the town clerk and get sworn in, and she'll, and she'll be able to do that. I don't, is she here this week, or is it last week she did? So she's here, so.
Becky Muskin will follow up you gentlemen.
Yeah, she'll send you emails and everything. But all those in favor of the three appointments?
Four, actually. Is it chief?
It's four, chief.
Yeah, chief, four, yeah. All right, so four.
Phil, you were on the last, the last time we met, right?
Yes.
So yeah, so Becky, Becky will reach out to you guys, I'm sure. And if not, the town clerk will sign you in. And I guess, before we can have a meeting with any type of votes or business taken, we do have to get everybody signed in. Sworn in, yeah, sworn in. All right. So that's it. Thank you very much for your volunteering, volunteering to be on the committee. Huh?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve the charge also?
Where's the charge?
It's attached as a memo.
Let's read the charge, then.
Says Fire Station Building Committee.
Yep. Okay. We're just, I think we usually read them, so I'll read it. Okay, the recommendation is to, the motion to approve the proposed charge for the Fire Station Building Committee as presented. The proposed charge reads, Fire Station Building Committee is charged with overseeing the construction of the Maynard Fire Station. The FSBC will meet periodically to assess and discuss the progress of the fire station project, and will meet with the owner's project manager, architects, contractors, and fire chief as needed. The FSBC will be responsible for approving change orders over $50,000. And the FSBC will provide periodic updates to the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, and will provide an end of project report to be included in the annual town meeting. And then the rest is, the recommended membership is at four, four at-large members, one fire chief, one BOS liaison, and a Finance Committee liaison, and a Capital Planning Committee liaison.
It's or capital.
I did write or, just whichever.
Or, okay, or capital, all right. And with terms to expire June 30th, 2022. Or to be discharged sooner upon completion of the committee's charge, membership may require reappointment pending project's completion date. Do we have a second?
Second, sorry.
Anybody have any questions about the charge? All those in favor of the charge? Okay, thanks.
And then they can decide when they're going to start to meet?
So the chief, chief is, if he hasn't already, I think he has, but he will be, he has our contact information, he'll reach out to them and schedule a time. I think he wants to meet next week. Next Tuesday.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
Excellent.
Great.
Mr. Boardman, I want to tell you that I've met very few people that have lived in Idaho, and I saw that you were a University of Idaho guy. I have, I have in-laws that are there, so they're, it's a beautiful country out there.
All right. Okay, so you guys are all set?
You guys can stick around if you want, or.
You can hang out all night. Feel free to stay all night. Ellen, how are you? Nice to see you.
Hi, Ellen.
Let's see, we're going to have a motion to accept the historic curfew bell, pending award of Community Preservation Act's funding to transfer and install the bell. A motion to authorize the town administrator's office to coordinate temporary installation of the donated bell onto town, onto town property.
You're next, John. You're next, after me.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right.
You can come over here, Ellen.
This gift, the historic commission, of which I am a member, was approached by the trustees from the church on the corner of Walnut and Thompson Street. Their congregation has diminished to the point where they must sell their church. And so they put it on the market, and not expecting that it would sell quite, it's difficult, it has no parking, you know where that church is. And they did get a buyer, a gentleman from Texas, apparently, who intends, according to the trustees, to use it as storage, similar to Murphy and Snyder. And the first thing he'll do is put a new roof on it, and then he intends, at some point, perhaps, to have a one, an apartment, one apartment in there. The church group has apparently made the sale contingent on a couple of things. It was always their intent to give us the bell, and I'll stop here and tell you a little bit about the bell. I've included the history here. It was cast in England in 1856. It's not really big. This is very difficult. It looks huge, but it isn't all that big. It's up in the tower and used to be the Mills curfew bell in the early days of the Mill. And I don't know which iteration, whether it was Assabett Mills, the Assabett Manufacturing, or the American Woolen Company. But I'm guessing it was probably the Assabett Manufacturing. If it was cast in 56, that would have been that, that history. It was rung every night at 9:00, and if you worked for the mill, you had to be home and in bed. Different times. And when they decided to cease that practice, the gentleman who was one of their watchmen, and he's named here, Maddie Katvila, who was a member of that church, asked if they could have it for their tower, for their church. So they took it and they hung it, and it's been hanging ever since in the church there. So they, the contingency that they've agreed to, I guess it's in the P and S, is that the, if the town accepts the gift, that negotiations to get it out of the tower need to take place. And there is also, I guess, a historic mural in there, quite large, that was not put on the wall itself, but put on something that was put on the wall. And they want to retrieve that. And there is also a time capsule in their cornerstone, which they want to try and find and get out of there. And so I think their agreement with the new owner, when and if it gets to this point, is that they will rent the church back for a period of time, which will allow them to then get rid, get these items out of the church in a timely fashion. And they have a tradition in their religious congregation of something called replanting. And they are going to be moving the small congregation and joining with another congregation somewhere in this area. And so they have many records of deaths and baptisms and marriages and all kinds of events in that church, which they want to gather and take with them. So having a period of time where they pay rent will allow them to vacate. They didn't expect it to sell this quickly, so they weren't prepared. And they're all, they're all, I mean, the woman I'm dealing with is a classmate of mine, so none of us are young anymore, so it will take some time to get the things out of the church. We, we were approached by them at least a year and a half ago, before they even put the, or maybe even two years ago. And so, knowing that this was coming up, we put an application in for CPC money, because this is exactly what that money is. It's supposed to preserve historic artifacts, one. And in the meantime, I know so much about steeplejacks and rigging that I never thought I really needed to know. So I called a company over in Natick, OB Hill, and there was a young man on the other line, I guess a managing fellow, and he was just over the moon. He said, "Don't let this bell go." He said, "This is an opportunity the town should not, you know, should not bypass." He said, but he did tell me that there are two ways that bells get in the tower. You build a church around it, which didn't happen in this case, or you move it in after the fact. And that's what they did. And if you look at their tower, they have louvers on three of the four sides of their square tower. And it's understood, we, we think that removing the louvers physically will allow the bell to be, it's a process called drifting. They would remove it, you know, take it off where it's hanging, secure it, and then drift it out of the tower down. We put in for the money, the CPC, and we think we have, we know we have enough to remove it. And I've been talking with Justin DiMarco about this. He's advised me on how to proceed with this. We would remove it, create it, and we would like to have it placed, and we think, and talked a little bit, I don't know if Bill is here, to Justin, maybe placing it somewhere in Memorial Park for the sesquicentennial. And with the provenance on a plaque of something, that it was in the mill, moved to the finished church, donated to the, to the, to the town of Maynard.
Ellen, is it your intention to have it there permanently?
Yes.
The, is there any issue with weatherization?
Yes, that's what we have to, once we have it, and Justin said he'd have to store it, but then we need to figure out, you know, whether we put some kind of, just a little roof over it. It's been enclosed all these years, so I don't think we want to leave it out to the elements.
That would be my concern.
Right. Yeah, we'd have to then get some, design maybe a cement pad, and then put some kind of a roofing over it, you know, to protect it. Yeah.
Rather than having it be displayed either in a town, in Town Hall, or in.
Depending on how big it is.
Maybe even in the lobby. I don't know how big the lobby of the new fire station is, but in the lobby of the new fire, who knows?
Yeah.
Well, we could always move it, I guess.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Without a doubt, I agree with what you've said, that it's something to preserve, and that's exactly what the CPC funds are for. It's a piece of history that talks to a lot about Maynard. But I'm concerned about putting it outside and then having it rust away.
Right, right. No, we would have to then, once we have it in our possession. And I want to make clear, too, that if this became, you know, a very expensive project, if we couldn't get it out, then clearly the money, CPC money just goes back to CPC. We would not be, you know, expending extraordinary amounts of money to save the bell. But it, it sounds like it's very doable, and it's an opportunity that will never come again, except if we had a discussion with the new owner, and if he decided to take the tower down, if he was redesigning the church, if we could come to an agreement later on, in which, when he removed the tower, he gave the bell to us. There may be other opportunities, but right now, we've, we've got, we think we have the funding, and we think we have a way of removing it, and then placing it somewhere, a place to be determined at a later date.
Do you know if this bell had been in the clock tower?
No, I don't think so, nobody seems to know, I asked Paul Boothroyd, if, if there's anything that you want to know about Maynard, Paul know, Paul knows it, if, if he doesn't know it, it's probably not worth knowing. But he doesn't know exactly where it was, you know, I suppose we could dig a little bit further, but I don't know where it was.
My benefit, I just wondered.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, it's, it's, it's a piece of history that, I mean, when you think that mill, an eighth of its workers were under sixteen, half of them were women, they were making five cents an hour for sixty hours, and there wasn't heat in that until deck came, do you know that? There was no heat in that building until deck came. So you think the conditions that these people worked under while this was ringing every night to send them to bed and off the streets, it's, it really is, and I think, you know, we're working on another project, the Historic Commission, for a beautiful marker for downtown Maynard, for the, for the Sesquicentennial, that depicts the entire history of the mill over six storyboards, and it will be at the Olson Plaza, we think. So I think it enhances the economic development for the town, to have the bell somewhere and visible, and it's an educational tool, certainly, we are a mill village, there's no denying that, we should celebrate that. And with this new sign, and you see the history of the town from the last hundred and seventy-five years, I think it will be a great addition to the downtown as well.
The mural that you mentioned earlier, is that something that they're giving to the town, or selling to the town, or is that something they want for themselves?
No, I think they're taking it with them, I think it's a religious significance to their faith, I think, that, she didn't tell me that at all, yeah, I think that's what she's, yeah, what she's, so, you know, there will be things to work, work out that I can't even imagine, but Justin's been very helpful through this whole thing, and I would continue to lean on, on him for, for guidance through this process.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about the bell?
Do you, how much did you put in for?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand?
Yeah. And we know that...
Do you think that's gonna be enough for the whole process, or?
I do. Knowing now that the, that the removal, the rigging, and the, and the, those two pieces that the fellow over in Natick told me about, would be around six thousand, I think there's adequate money to then, we don't want it to ring necessarily, we just want it to be mounted somewhere, and I think we can clearly do that and protect it. Again, maybe we do place it, would be great. You know, that location of the fire station is in an area across from St. Bridges, called Amory's Grove. You know, that belonged to Amory Maynard, the church land was purchased for seven hundred dollars from Amory and Mary Maynard, but that area there was called Amory's Grove, it might be a very fitting place, David.
Well, the design has a little seating area in front of that building.
Yeah, that's true, that's true, I like that idea, yeah.
Good thing the fire station building committee's here.
They're taking notes.
We're excited about the Sesquicentennial, so I think things are coming together really, really, really well. I think it'll be a grand celebration of a lovely town, so.
I'm looking forward to the nineteenth.
Yes, it's gonna be good, yeah, we're gonna have antique cars representing, and they will carry the time capsule to the front of the sanctuary, and then we'll have a grand ceremony to bring it up to the front of the sanctuary, and we'll have some fun opening it up. And we've engaged the young people to join us, the music will be provided by the high school, and we'll have the American Legion, and we'll have, we'll have a nice time.
That time capsule's from nineteen seventy...
Nineteen seventy-one.
Seventy-one, so does, does anyone have a list of what's in there?
We do, yes, yeah, there'll be no surprises, there'll be no surprises.
We were having a family discussion about what might be in it, and I'm like, it's probably a beacon.
I think Dave Griffin knows, he has a list of what's in it.
It'd be the Acton Beacon too, because Acton and Maynard had a beacon together at the time, so.
Right.
I was telling my wife, my name might be in it for Little League.
Could be, I don't have no, I didn't ask, I wanted to be surprised, so, so we'll see. Thank you.
So Mr....
Thank you.
There's two, I typed up two motions, to consider. She's asking the town to take the bell, but you have to accept it.
Right, so...
So we're gonna do the two motions separately?
I recommend it, because one is to accept it, as I wrote, pending the award of CPA, because I don't have the budget otherwise, but, and then the second thing is, is to allow, because I don't know exactly where it's gonna go yet, so just I want to make sure.
So we, I read them both, they were seconded, so we can vote on them separately then.
Okay.
First, we, the motion was to accept the historic curfew bell pending the award of CPA funds to transfer the, and install the bell. All those in favor of that? Okay, and the second was a motion to authorize, authorize the town administrator's office to coordinate temporary installation of the donated bell on town property, and all in favor of that.
Alright, thank you, Mr....
Alright, thanks. Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you very much, Ellen.
Will you send a note if I give you the address of the trustees with, with this, is that in thanking, on behalf?
Oh, to say like we've...
Yes.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, great, I wasn't sure if we wanted to meet.
Send me email with their addresses.
Yes, I will.
Kind of like you're ringing the bell at nine o'clock.
Thank you.
Get everyone off the streets.
And if you got caught, if you got caught, you got fired.
You got fired, right.
Yeah, hearing that they're only like sixteen years old.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, imagine that? One eighth of the work is less than sixteen years old.
Less than sixteen.
Less than sixteen hours.
Presumably they weren't going to school.
Yeah, a lot of those kids didn't go to school.
Well, that's...
They went to work.
Yeah.
Till nine o'clock.
Yeah.
Alright. Caitlin, how are you?
Doing well about yourselves?
We're good.
You're good, are you?
I can only speak for you, though, okay. So we have a motion to authorize the town administrator's office to draft a town meeting article to execute the transfer of ownership of Mockingbird Lot as shown in Exhibit A attached on the Board of Selectmen to the Conservation Commission. Do we have a second?
Second. You can have it.
Toss up.
If I for it.
Alright, um, okay, Megan, I mean, Caitlin, alright.
So, do you want me to kind of explain the whole thing?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so...
We have a brief description, but if you could give us...
Introduce yourself first, King, for the audience.
Oh, yeah, I'm Caitlin Young, I'm the Assistant Town Planner and the Conservation Agent. So back in two thousand...
John Dwyer, I'm the Conservation Commission and Community Preservation.
Thank you, Kate.
In two thousand twelve, when the landfill, when the town determined to switch it over to a solar farm, there was a little bit of an issue, because previously, the land had been dedicated towards open space, and per Article ninety-seven, any land in open space use, in order to be taken out of that use or transferred to a different use, it needs to go to the state legislature, and both branches need to kind of sign off on allowing the land to be transferred, and as part of that, they've required two things, one being the dedication of a dog park with some of that property, and two being a, a land swap where the town would either acquire or transfer to the Conservation Commission, an amount of property equal to the landfill, to, it's known as their no net loss policy, it's just to ensure that, you know, we don't have a loss of open space. And the dog park was built, as we all know, but the land transfer never occurred. And since it never occurred, we have an outstanding Article ninety-seven land swap issue, and because of that, there are certain grants we can't get from the state, such as park grants, which could be used for park improvements, you know, finishing Veterans Memorial Park, or land acquisition grants that could help us purchase more conservation property when it comes up for sale. So understanding that there wasn't, there are not a lot of funds to buy new land, I went through the properties owned by the Board of Selectmen and found the properties on the sheet in front of you, bordered by Blue Jay Way and Mockingbird, and I chose, we chose those parcels, the Conservation Commission and I, because they have really no development potential, so there's nothing else that can really go there, because it's covered in wetlands for the most part. I will also mention that I'd spoken to legal counsel about whether or not we needed a town meeting warrant, and it looks like back when the land was acquired in the late sixties, early seventies, it was actually acquired for school, for school property. And I spoke to Jim Coleman, who was on the planning board at the time, and he actually mentioned that, at the time, the town, in order to keep land from being developed, they were acquiring land under weird uses, such as for school property, just to keep it out of, keep it from being, you know, developed or sold off. But because the land wasn't actually acquired initially by, or for conservation or open space, it has to go to town meeting for approval of a transfer.
So the map that you, that you gave us, I just want to clarify, so it, it is all shaded in green, and then you say green shading represents the wetland, so basically there, it really, that whole area is all wetlands?
Yes, and because it's resource, it's wetland resource area itself, and therefore, that's, it's very much discouraged making any alterations to that, if you do propose a project with that, usually you have to provide compensatory wetlands, and on a space like this, it's not really doable.
Is the area that's, that's going to be transferred, the one that's in red?
In red, yeah.
Is that currently conservation land? No. What is it currently? Who?
It's currently owned by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
Yeah.
You could have built a house there, you don't know.
No, no, the, the reason I raise this point is, if it becomes the equivalent of conservation land or non-developable land, when we did our exercise to prove that we were safe harbored from forty B, relative to the non-developable land in town, I don't know where, if at all, this land was counted. It may have been counted as non-developable, but what I want to make sure is we don't lose it, and if, or if, in the alternative, if it adds to it and gives us further safe harbor for that one and a half percent, or whatever the percentage is.
Yeah, that's something I can take a look into, I'm not sure if it was counted, I'm assuming that they should have taken in the wetland area, because it's relatively undevelopable areas such as this.
Con, con land, they definitely would have.
Yes, because it's protected by Article ninety-seven, but...
The BOS land, I don't know if that was considered undevelopable.
Which land, sorry?
The, the, what we're calling the BOS land.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know if that was considered undevelopable when they did that exercise, but I want to make sure it gets added in as undevelopable land.
Yeah, and doing, by putting it into the Conservation Commission's ownership per se.
We can look into it.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure we're protecting ourselves.
Anybody have any other questions about creating a town meeting article? No? All those in favor? And then, so, I mean, you'll have to, someone will have to get up in front of town meeting and speak about it.
You can do it.
Am I allowed to? I thought as a...
You could be a guest.
Of course.
You could be a guest of the town, and you could do it, or one of us could do it.
Wonderful, I wouldn't mind, I can do it.
No, if you've done all the legwork, you deserve to get up and make the pitch.
Oh, boy.
Get booed.
Oh, gosh, hopefully not.
No one will boo you, but yeah, so that, that's a ways out, but yeah, so thank you very much for all the hard work, it clearly went on behind us.
Certainly a research endeavor.
A research.
Yeah. Alright, well, I think that's it, so thanks, and, you know, we'll, we'll see what happens with the, the presentation for town meeting.
I will.
So they're sticking around because they have, she's...
Oh, the stormwater.
The stormwater also.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
We're trying to kick you out in your...
Just not leaving, I don't blame you.
This is a motion to accept and approve draft control DD, which amends the bylaw, chapter thirty-four, stormwater management. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, what is this one, Caitlin?
So, as you probably remember, I think two meetings ago, Lori Kennedy from VHB came in to do a presentation on the MS four program, excuse me, and per this year's MS four requirements, we're required to make some modifications to our stormwater bylaws. The majority of the changes in this amendment are per the MS four requirements, there are a few that the commission has put in, for instance, we were looking at the triggering mechanisms for stormwater permit, and currently, the way it reads, it's an acre or more of disturbance, and disturbance means any alteration such as digging, it's not just building or creating impervious surface, it's actually physically disturbing the soil, so any construction site where you're digging up soil and that sort of thing. And we decided to lower it, because at one acre, there are very few properties in town that are an acre or larger, but simultaneously, all of our stormwater treatment mechanisms are, you know, kind of come together as being important and helping the town overall, versus just looking at it as like one property versus another property. So by lowering that threshold, we're able to do more of a thorough review of projects. I will keep in mind, or keep in mind that this is only for new development or redevelopment, if this, by, by changing the threshold down to ten thousand square feet, it's not going to affect anyone whose property already has a structure or disturbance that's ten thousand feet or greater, it's only for new projects that are proposed, or projects that are proposing more disturbance or a disturbance. Besides that, we are recommending...
Is that specified in here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes. Well, it's not, it's not in the language of the bylaw, it's, well, it's in the sponsor comments, because the language saying a land disturbance greater than ten thousand square feet, the disturbance itself is considered the alteration, not like...
I, I'm trying to visualize, how, how many square feet, if you know, is an acre?
It's forty, forty-two thousand?
Okay, so this is like a quarter of an acre.
Yeah, it's like a quarter of an acre.
Which means basically, which is a typical, that's typical size for a new lot in town, do you think?
Um, so, more or less, depending on what zone you're in, I know general residents, if you had a lot that was completely vacant, the minimum's about seventy-five hundred. But I, I did look at overall the parcels in town, and actually, most of, a lot of them are rate under that ten thousand, or rate above it, but in those cases, you would have to disturb the entirety of that parcel, which isn't particularly common.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because, you know, I don't think we, and I think this is what Armin's getting at, we don't have to tell you that what kills these things, the town meeting, is these, these small little things, where people say, "Wait a minute, that means I can't, you know, build a pool in my backyard."
Yeah, and it's, yeah, a pool would still be allowed, as long as you're not using, you're not taking ten thousand square feet to disturb the soil, which is a lot, that would be a large...
That's the type, that's the type of thing that gets people...
Yeah, and, and that's something we're ready to explain, we figured in the presentation, we'd kind of break it down and explain that, you know, if you're just do, even if you're just putting in like, let's say, a, a garage, or a deck, or something like that, it's most likely not going to trigger that ten thousand square feet.
But you, so even if it does trigger that ten thousand square feet, you're not even, you're not actually saying that they couldn't do it either?
Correct.
It just means that they have to go through a site review plan.
Yeah, we just have to review their stormwater treatment and pre-treatment, and the overall hydrology of the site.
It's protective of the environment, it's protective of our community, it's protective of our stormwater.
Yeah, our stormwater system especially, yeah.
So, alright, um, does, has the bylaw committee seen this too? Have they got a copy?
I believe, I did send it, I believe, last week, but I haven't had a response back yet.
Oh, maybe they haven't met.
I don't, I don't know if they have to and not have to, because there's somebody else sponsoring, but I would think that they would, they would review, at least review it for us to make sure we're...
They should endorse it, but...
In the same page.
So you can hold off if you want now, and we can propose it, like, we can allow Bill Coleman and his team to look at it.
Well, I, I would just, I don't know, are we...
We are asking to accept and approve the draft control, we'll just go with the rest of the warrant, but you don't have to do that tonight if you don't want to, if you want to wait for Bill Coleman.
I, I just think for every, for everyone's sake, it might be wise to just wait for Bill's group to...
That's no problem.
Bless it.
I'm gonna be back that day anyway, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, okay, so we'll let them take a peek, and then we'll, we'll take a look, so I'll withdraw the, the motion.
Where, where did the language that, you know, the real detailed language, did that come from, the stormwater people?
So some of it was through, some of it was recommended by the MS four permitting. A big part of this as well is that, so our stormwater bylaw follows the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook, the problem is, at the end of this fiscal year, the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook is going to be, is not going to be in compliance with the MS, federal MS four, so we're kind of taking a step...
Got it.
Further to make sure this is all set, so we don't get in trouble with the federal government. The state was able to get an extension, but the municipalities, for the most part, are kind of stuck. So some of it was recommended by VHB, and some of it, we worked together to put together, and the commission as well, so. We took, we had an entire working meeting, and then half of another meeting to kind of work this out. Next, we'll have to do the regulations as well.
Okay. Now, most of the language is recommended, so it's like...
Yeah.
And for somebody who falls into this category, where they, where they have to go through a process, is there a fee, is there a processing fee?
So right now, there's a two hundred dollar fee for our stormwater permit. In my time here, it's pretty much been commercial properties or multifamily residential such such as, you know, Jimmy McDonald's properties at 42 and 115, the fire station was required to have one. There's a $200 fee for us. If peer review is required, they'd have to pay the peer review fees as well.
Do you know if that fee is consistent or in line with other communities?
Actually, as we do the regulations, we might take a look at it. We haven't really spoken about it much, but I was thinking that depending on the size of the project, like, a project the size of, let's say, 129 Parker Street, a $200 fee for that doesn't really make sense versus a small project such as even the fire station. So, as we go through the regulations, we're going to take another look at the application fees and try to figure out something a little, little more logical than what's there now.
Right, and I think we've had discussion here about looking at all of our fees and just making sure they're compliant, you know, compliance is the wrong word.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah. While looking at other towns, I did, I have taken a look at what other towns charge, and it's kind of, it goes either way. But what I think is probably the most effective thing would be doing like a tiered between types of projects, like larger development over X amount of acres versus smaller, you know, things the size of the fire station or if someone, if a smaller project triggered it as opposed to, you know. It just seems a little bizarre to me that it's $200 flat across the board.
Like $300 for us, for working on, on a site, you know, construction site.
Yeah, and there's a lot of review that goes through it too between the Commission and me, and other staff. So, 200, it just doesn't seem like it's the appropriate fee for that.
Fees like this are a way to, you know, you don't want to make a generating revenue, but generate revenue.
Helps.
Any other questions or...
I don't think so. I don't know.
Wonderful.
That's it. I think that's all.
Yeah, I'll send him a follow-up email, and I'll see you guys next time because I have to be here anyway next time, so.
Okay.
No skin off my back.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good night. Thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem. Anytime, anytime.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John.
We're good.
All right.
Mr. Budget Update.
Budget Update. So, Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
Following the February 8 joint meeting, and then I got sick again, and when I came back, Mike Guzzo and I put our heads together, he's around here somewhere, and we tried to figure out how we're going to pay for everything again. Mike, in the meantime, went to a finance committee meeting and tried to get better, a better feel from them, what they were looking for because they were not fans of our original proposal to pay for the feasibility study for the new elementary school, taking a million dollars out of the general stabilization fund. Mike's alternative that they seemed receptive to was this new scheme that we're proposing. Half from general stabilization and half through what we're, we call capital override. Officially, it's known as a capital outlay expenditure exclusion. But the point is, instead of, instead of taking the full million dollars out of the general stabilization, what the finance committee didn't feel comfortable with, we wouldn't. So, we would, we would artificially increase taxes for the other half and not impact taxes for the first half, the 500,000, with the idea that the MSBA, the state building authority, the school building authority would reimburse the town potentially, I don't want to give exact numbers, but let's say it's 30 to 50% of what it could be, which could in fact replenish the general stabilization fund. Finance committee seemed to like that plan better than, than the other plan.
So, can I ask a question about that?
Of course.
One of the things that came up at that meeting was, the finance committee didn't appear to be satisfied with the fact that if that money was paid, when the MSBA repaid the money to the town, that it wouldn't, that it might not get spent where, it might not go where it's supposed to be. It might not go back into general stabilization.
It shouldn't be.
So, I'm just curious what the, I kind of assumed, you know, that it would just happen. So, is that a concern, or is it just if we, if we earmark that that's, if that's the decision?
Ermark it is part of the article.
Correct. So, like, we can just be very clear in the appropriation, whether it be this appropriation or when, when the state comes back with that money, that that's where that money would go to. It's a form of revenue. It's any, it's another budgetary source, and so it does have to be...
Because what would happen, it would go to the general fund, and then we would have to go to town meeting.
Kind of like Free Cash does. If we have an extraordinary amount of revenue, some of that extraordinary revenue can go back to the stabilization funds.
So, basically, at the end of, once the, once the state pays us back for it, you would do it, an article like Free Cash to put it back into general stabilization.
Into a separate line as non-recurring, identify it, and then we'll go to town meeting. We create the article to put it back in. We would specifically identify for that.
On the back end, you wouldn't see that, but the account would be set aside so that we didn't touch it always.
That it wouldn't, okay.
Go ahead.
What's the impact on the average single-family tax?
I knew you would ask that. All right. Based upon the current tax rate, if we do, it would be one year only and one year only, and then it would disappear following year. It would be approximately for...
500,000.
500,000 for one year would be $125.96.
That's for the average single-family household, based on current tax rates.
Which is about a $350,000 house-ish.
And then what's Plan B should the override fail?
Then we would go back to the original plan.
So, the original plan was the full million dollars.
Would you be able to get there in time for funding for the summer?
No, 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 no. So, let's, let's back it up. So, timing is key, and I, and this is all kind of complicated, so I'm glad you bring this up. So, the timing is, you have, the MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, wants to have a commitment from the town by January of 2021. So, there's kind of two opportunities traditionally that this town made appropriate money. One is in May at the annual town meeting. Sometimes we do special town meeting articles as well, which we'll probably have to do this year. And then the second opportunity is around October, right now, we're thinking about October 5th or so, to do another special town meeting, and traditionally, we do do that fall. And that would be, that's the time to do it. Now, we could schedule another special town meeting sometime before January 2021, but generally, that, that's about the timeframe we do it. And so, I suspect that there would, that there's going to be more conversations to this. And so, I, at this time, I'm not proposing, I'm not expecting an annual town meeting article for, for whatever the scheme we come up with. I did expect it to be in the fall, and that's what I spelled out in the timeline. So, in the spring, it's to address the roof. In the fall, it's to address the feasibility study.
I mean, the danger of what you just, that's the danger of what you said, the downside of doing it as a capital exclusion, is that if either town meeting were to vote, either one voted down, or let's say you took the vote and it was voted down, we would have to come up with an alternative to how to fund the study.
Or the risk is you miss the MSBA opportunity, and I don't know what that risk means exactly.
So, let's look at it holistically when, and I don't know what else is on the table for tax increase potential for that, for, you know, you say it's $125 first time, one year done.
That was the other drawback I told you.
If there are other tax increases that are being proposed for that year, it's not just $125. It's $125 plus $76 for the, for the fire station, plus whatever we have for whatever else we were talking about at the Saturday meeting. You might be looking at a $600 increase from somebody, and when somebody's looking at that from town meeting, it's not a $125 tax increase that they're looking at. They're saying, which one of these am I going to say no to?
I mean, I don't disagree because when I sent Greg a separate email, everything you mentioned was part of that, is that if you would ask voters which one they would choose, if you gave them an option, you know they would choose the one, you know, doing it on stabilization.
I just think it's only fair to the residents to explain that, look, this is one of possibly three or four. So, it's not just, you know, this one, whatever it's referred to, it's a $125 increase for one year. You might also be looking at, they might also be at the same town meeting and the same ballot that we go to be asking for, fire station, Green Meadow, you know, whatever the heck is out there for a total number of $700.
I don't disagree. I think that was a thing I mentioned to Greg, is that with the downside to it, really, the option should be, we present both options to you, and then eventually, you know, decide which one you wanted to choose.
Could I, could I go into some of those, some of those other items that we were referring to? So, that's, that, I wanted to bring that up. It's kind of one of the biggest changes. But before that, because I wasn't here, but I understand that the CBI, who's the consultant that we used to do the roof study, did brief the board as well as the school committee, and we wrote in the school committees the recommendations to address the Green Meadow roof, particularly the pre-kindergarten and the kindergarten room, which is the 1974 and 1954 rooms of the elementary school, the oldest portion of the elementary school. So, I had a follow-up conversation with the consultant last week to make sure I understood what was said, and then so allowed Mike and I to kind of come up with a spending scheme, which I presented in the packet, and I'll explain now. So, the 1974 section, the pre-K section, needs to be fixed. I think the proposal that he threw out there was an estimated amount of $313,000 to do that, to do those repairs, which is a certain amount of like the resurfacing as well as sections of the corrugated steel that needs to be replaced. That's the 1974 section. That's the currently unoccupied pre-K side. And you've got the 1954 section, which he believes also needs to be addressed. And then that was something that even the school committee said, if I recall, in their recommendations, they said, we absolutely want to get the pre-K occupied. We also want the kindergarten side repaired simultaneously, preferably over the summertime when, when the school is out. So, the consultant wasn't entirely sure about the estimate of that amount, but in combination, he felt comfortable with about $650,000 to do both, so do the whole shooting match, $650,000. Now, that doesn't address the envelope. That doesn't address, and by the envelope, I mean there were some woodworking, some, some window repairs that, that was identified, and if you recall, in the report. There's also a section of the roof just to the north of the cafeteria, which that part of the roof was built in the 80s. That is also flat. That needs better regular maintenance. So, he didn't feel like it, this is over the phone call with me, he didn't feel like that needed to have like a full renovations, but we do need to do a better job of addressing the regular maintenance. My plan in response to that is, we are still going through the negotiations to have a director of building operations, a facilities manager. And I want that person to be able to fulfill that role of doing better maintenance on the school as a whole, but particularly that section of the roof. And then, and as well as the, the rest of the envelope study, but we would have to identify funding to support that if that's the case. Right now, the school, the school department allocates about $15,000 a year to the school maintenance, and that, if that may not be enough, I'm not sure, to address all the, all the individual needs of that envelope study. I know I'm going fast, but this is in the, this is in the spreadsheet. So, to go back, what I was saying, that's $650,000 a year. Mike and the finance team crushed the numbers. It comes out to about $143,000 a year if we were to do it through a debt exclusion, which is what I'm proposing because I don't have the money in capital stabilization. The finance committee seems not a fan of taking out of general stabilization. Only other way you can come up with money is through general fund or through an artificial increase in taxes. That's a debt exclusion. So, do it over the course of five years, comes out to $143,000 a year. Let me see what the average, and the average single-family impact estimate, which is your point, David, is $36. So, that's in addition to the $500,000 worth of, towards, the debt exclusion towards...
And that 36 is only for one year also?
No. That's every year.
It's every year if we're going for five years.
That's for the $650,000. It doesn't include any additional years.
How was their discussion? Was it unanimous vote that they took? Did they take a vote?
Where? Who?
The finance committee? Or did they just make a recommendation?
On which? 650?
On which?
Did they make a recommendation on this 120, on this, oh, this, what do you refer, capital outlay expenditure exclusion?
The override, the capital override.
They were, their discussion was, they did not feel that the million dollars that originally was going to be spent should, they felt it should be put before the voters. That was their concern. They didn't just feel that we should just take it out of stabilization. So, the capital override suggestion I had was basically to compromise. Now, whether, which one is better than the other or which one, that's really what the compromise is. They have, you know, and they mentioned, I mentioned it to them, and they seemed to think that that was the way to go. But, you know, as you pointed out, there were drawbacks to, to going with the capital override.
I wish we'd had this discussion on Saturday morning.
Exactly.
You know, then we could have had their minds with our minds and, and, you know, the school committee participation. We talked about having another meeting at some point, but I don't know if we have the time.
Well, you do because you're never going to be putting this, that one.
If, before annual town meeting, correct. It would be pretty tight. There, it might be a possibility, but either way, we need to have the article drafted if, in fact, it's going in May soon. But if we postpone it until October, you would have the rest of the summer.
I, I, you know, I'm always trying to take the more conservative route when you're talking about potential. Need something to be done, do the one that you're more guaranteed to get results from.
Which would be that one, yes.
Rather than having a scramble. That's why I don't put much faith in this environment on an override. I really don't. I don't think it's, you know, I'm hearing too much about concern relative to, to taxes. And if we're going to be throwing, I'll be honest, I was out collecting signatures. I think out of the 60 signatures I got, 48 of the people said, what are you going to do about our taxes? That is, it was extraordinary, and without any prompting. It's, that is the number one issue on people's minds, is the cost of living. And if you're going to risk a project that needs to be done on an override, now, I understand the finance committee's thoughts. I just think it deserves a more serious discussion about the, the potential failure of an override vote.
I did send them an email, and they're voicing exactly what you said. And that's why we decided, you know, eventually, it's just going to be up to the Board of Selectmen, which one they, you know, they felt more comfortable with. I mean, you really should be looking at both, not one or the other, you know.
Unfortunately, so I, you know, I, I definitely understand bringing it to the people, you know, and then let the town, you know, really feel, have a vested interest in this. However, by bringing it to the people, that means we raise their taxes. So, if we did it the other way, without bringing, without that, if we did it through a general stabilization or a capital stabilization, then, you know, yes, they wouldn't have a vote, but then at the same time, it wouldn't raise the taxes.
They would have a vote. They would just have to vote whether it takes or not.
Right, whether or not you're going to appropriate from, yeah, so exactly, sorry. So, it's not like a, it's not a ballot vote. I'm sorry. I missed.
No, it's okay. But that, but you, you make a, you make a good point. It is, it is, there's still, it's a different approach, and so we're not, we're not expecting you all to say this or that. We're just sort of proposing another option.
This is where we're at.
We figured we give both options, and then rather than say, this is the one, we're giving you both.
Also, I mean, this, this was their point, is that, you know, from, from a municipal finance standpoint, it's not necessarily the most fiscally prudent approach to whittle down your reserves to such a point where it could harm our bond rating, it could harm our ability to borrow. When we go out for a bigger project, we get a higher rate because our savings are too low. That's, that's where the discussion comes in, but you're also taking the risk. So, I don't, I, I don't like the risk of a failed vote and then, you know.
So, we, the urgency there, I'm sorry, the urgency is not there as the degree is fixing the pre-K and kindergarten roof, if that's how the board feels to go. And so, in that regards, you can do a special town meeting as part of the May 18 annual town meeting. Just, that's what we often do. And then you can, you can immediately appropriate the $650,000 if the board feels that's appropriate. And then the very next day, we can contact bond council and the banks and then move forward so that way they can start the construction. And I've already, I've already briefed CBI, but they need to get going on starting to draft construction documents because we should have bid that already for the summertime because all the contractors, they, they probably already have their summer schedules. And so, we have to start, we have to start bidding. But either way, yeah, yeah, so that, so you have different projects that roof has to get addressed, and then, but this decision can be made in summertime. I think that, I think meeting in, in March, if possible, do another roundtable or joint budget, or I want to call it. That's great, but at a minimum, I think we should do it in July, just as we've said before, so we can make sure we kind of prepare for a fall town meeting.
So, Justine, just so I understand, you're, you're, you're sort of leaning towards being, lack of a better phrase, be easier on the taxpayer. of a better phrase, to be easier on the taxpayer?
Being concerned with the taxpayer, yes. So, so I don't know, and that's the thing, is I think we're talking, and I, I forget what the, what the proposal was before we started, because I know, because I feel like we're talking, we're also talking about two different projects too, because we're talking about the roof, and then we're also talking about the MSBA. I personally feel, and I know that they're gonna disagree, but I, I feel that for the MSBA stand, from, from the, for the feasibility study, if we decide to go forward with that, that if, as long as it's repaid, that thirty-eight to forty to forty-nine percent is repaid to the general stabilization account, then
Yep, alright.
I think that that's worth that, without having to, again, especially if there's a plan that we're gonna go for a fire station, and if we might have to go for the, I'm just trying to lessen it a little bit.
I hear you, I just, I just wanna hear what the, you know, I.
So.
We, we basically felt that we owed it to the board of selectmen to present both scenarios, and then leave, and then basically, you know, you would be able to decide which one, you know, you felt, I mean, I'm not voicing my opinion either way, so.
When you were out, right, I thought the, I thought the school, I thought the school wanted, was talking about a lesser number than the six fifty of it.
Weren't they gonna do the three thirteen?
I thought they wanted to do the, I thought they wanted to do the one, the one piece.
They didn't want it reset, but if I recall in the letter, I may, I may be misremembering, but they did, in like one of the lower paragraphs, they noticed, they did.
They said that at some point it's gonna be, so that's my thing, is I don't, do we need to clarify from them, because I actually don't remember what their ask was at the meeting.
They wanted to do the orange.
Yeah, they wanted to do the two hundred and thirteen, and then, Justine, I believe you asked, is it less expensive doing them together, and the gentleman from CBI said, a little bit.
But then they were concerned about going up against the accessibility trigger as well.
Yes.
So, so that's, so I don't know if we need to get like a definitive concrete, or if we don't have.
They kinda left that meeting having a little more research to do, I think.
That's fair.
They were looking at not crossing that threshold, that thirty percent threshold, was it the thirty percent?
Yeah.
So, so we're, we're still hopefully okay with that, Justin has been crunching the numbers, and I make an allusion to this in my notes, is that it's thirty percent of renovations, not maintenance, renovations that have been done within thirty-six month period. Justin crunched the numbers of all the work we've been doing in the Green Meadow Elementary School, he thinks we got about nine hundred thousand dollars left before we hit that thirty percent threshold.
But that's for this year, and then whatever comes up next year.
That's right, so it's rolling.
And then whatever comes up, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Rolling, so that's six hundred and fifty thousand dollars is still below that, and it gives us a little bit of wiggle room to do any, anything beyond if we need to, but my question to the school committee would be, do they, when, when would they want the other half of the flat roof fixed? If they, if we do the pre-K side for three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, or whatever it is, then are they okay with waiting another year until the next summer to do the repairs? Because at that point.
It may also cost more too, by that time.
Very much, and so, I don't, to your question, I don't know with the school committee, what their timeline, what their, I would expect their preferred timeline is to do it all at once, but I, I guess not.
So I think we need a, we need a definitive, an actual definitive request from the school committee, does that make?
Six fifty was put in there, knowing that
Correct.
We may not use the entire amount, we're not gonna go out and borrow six fifty, we may only borrow three thirteen, and that's it.
Right.
The thing is, if you don't authorize that, it's like authorizing for building, you know, a high school. If you don't authorize it, you cannot ban, you cannot short-term.
Right.
The alternative then becomes, you're gonna have to find three hundred thousand dollars later on. So all this is doing is saying, it allows you the flexibility.
Up to six hundred and fifty thousand, no.
And not knowing it will do it.
With permission, Bond, so the, so the bid documents will be done, because again, the, Michael Teller and I were talking about this, he'll do, he'll do it in what's called a base bid, so you get the base bid of just the nineteen seventy-four, the pre-K side, then you get an alternative amount of the fifty-four side, and then, so you don't have to do that if you don't want to, if you find out it's gonna be more expensive, or you're just, you know, whatever, and then he can do separate alternatives for options beyond that as well. So, and that should bear out what the true cost would be, that, you know, like the contractor, the timeline, it's gonna be, because maybe it's not possible to do both in the, I can't remember, it's, it's not very long, between the last day of school and when the teachers go back in. So if the contractors all come back and say like, I can't do it, then you have your answer. But, so, he's on, he's at the Colapico's Island for the next couple of weeks, but when he comes back, he should have the documents.
I mean, example would be the high school, we did it as three separate bonds.
Right, 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 so.
And they were all done over a period of a year.
More like bathroom stuff, that's what we.
Right, but so that, that's, but to the point of, as far as how much it would cost you, how much it would raise your taxes in general, if you end up only borrowing three hundred and thirteen or three hundred and fifty thousand.
Then it would be roughly half of it.
Even though you're authorized for six fifty, it's only gonna be the three fifty.
It would be, say you only did the three thirteen, it would cost you eighteen dollars, roughly.
Exactly. So, one quick question about the, just since we're still on Green Meadow, I know that we talked about the capital project for the bathrooms, that they wanna do the bathrooms. So, again, though, now we're, and I don't know, and at this point, I'm not sure who to ask, but that, again, is now probably adding to that
It does.
Number of the trigger, again?
Yeah, I believe Justin included that in his regulation. But you're, but you're, that's a, it's a, that is a renovation, so yes, it has to be, it's not, it's not painting, it's not regular maintenance, that is renovation.
So that's not something they would wanna put off, so they have more of a buffer, or whatnot, so.
That was one of their, like, top.
Their top ones, okay, alright.
Well, I think if it made the list, is there a top one, right?
Of the three items?
Unless it was like a really expensive one, like a new school that we can't put on the free cash.
No, of the lesser capital items, between the Fowler Middle, the Fowler Middle School bathrooms, the Green Meadow bathrooms, and the wifi.
Those are what made it, yeah.
Two-year wifi, I don't know if they, of those three, they're all kind of the same priority, I believe. Oh, and the smart projectors, they wanted smart projectors too.
Right.
So, and I also wanna point out, Mr. Chairman, that there's a little bit of a different scheme for some of the closeout, this is kinda in the weeds, some of the closeout articles that we were proposing, that was gonna contribute towards, kind of like, what, free cash, we would be doing free cash, articles that have just been unused, because the project is either complete or not going to be completed, and so, Justin DeMarco wanted to be able to funnel some of the, about twenty-four thousand dollars worth of that cap, closeout funds, back towards specifically DBW projects, as opposed to just kind of going into the collective capital operation, which I'm okay with, a lot of those are, all those articles were DBW projects anyways. But he, that's he's proposing, is a DBW capital improvements. So I don't know if the board had a question for that, again, it's kinda.
Do we know if those articles allowed for reuse of that money?
Yeah.
Yes, they were all from free cash, so what you're doing is putting it back.
Yep, so it's only twenty-four thousand dollars, but with the capital planning committee, there, you know, that definitely is a threshold that everything has to be reviewed by them anyways, so it's kinda like a supervisory sort of rule.
You know, you say it's only twenty-four thousand dollars, we sat in a meeting
That's true.
Tuesday night.
I thought big numbers a lot.
Thursday night of last week, with the recreation commission.
Right, that's right.
And they were talking about eighteen thousand dollars, and we told them we didn't have.
Yeah, that's, that's fair, but that's for regular maintenance, they want, they want eighteen thousand dollars a year, if I recall.
Yeah.
And this is more, we need to buy big items that will have smaller maintenance, so, but that's a fair point, that's a fair point.
Maybe a mower.
Mower, no, they're already, they're already committing to the mower.
Who's committing?
We found out some information about that, too.
Okay, so we'll have to, but I'm gonna follow up on that.
Speaking of which.
You gonna follow up on the mower now?
Mower, DPW is committing to it.
Oh, about mower.
You gonna follow up on the mower?
Golf course must have a mower.
Well, that's a good idea.
Is that something you're doing now, or tomorrow, or what?
No.
No, I mean, tomorrow.
Just later.
Tomorrow.
Another time, we're gonna follow up on the mower, right? All right, let's go into the, I guess, are we done with the budget, is it, do we have more?
So, that, I mean, no, that, I think that was it.
So was that?
I, I was kinda looking if there was any specifically, as far as the urgency goes, I do need to know if the board has any objections at this point, or if they, or, or what your hesitations may be about moving forward with starting to draft at least the six hundred and fifty thousand dollar debt exclusion request to fix both sides. Now, we can wait until we get clear, clear sort of preference from the school committee, but, well, we need to be drafting these articles at this point.
But if we do, and if we don't use it, I mean, to your point, from a tax perspective, has to be explained to the residents how it's gonna work.
Same thing as the high school, you authorized forty million, and ended up only using, you know, I mean, we got money back, but out of the twenty.
If it's explained properly, I don't know if we're gonna have an issue with that.
Right, and then simultaneously, we will know what the true cost is
Correct.
Once we get the bids. So, is the board okay with moving forward with starting to draft these articles, at least for the six hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
I'm okay, I don't know.
Yeah.
Alright, that's fine, I mean, you're not, you're not approving the article right now, we'll have to come back with the actual article.
There's a lot of questions, I mean, I'm okay, but there's still a lot of questions before we move anywhere, so, that could change.
Very good, okay. Okay, so, no, Mr. Chairman, that was, that was the sort of the big updates, I don't, we don't have any updates on the operating funds side of the house.
No, other than we'll change the budget to reflect the six, the hundred and forty-three, instead of the two point two, because that's off the table.
Since we're on the subject of the, of the budget, I mean, based on the meeting we had on February eighth, are we gonna schedule some kind of a follow-up, or?
We are, we're gonna talk about that in about two minutes.
Okay.
Because I've been, so anyways, yeah, so I'll get to that now, I'll take it out of the, my notes, but, the report.
I'm sorry.
No big deal, so we, so, I've been going back and forth a little bit with everybody, and everybody includes, FinCom, school committee, you know, the three of us, just, I mean, you know, Bethlen, Ken, and I, Greg, Mary Jane Rixon, and others who, you know, looking to do it, so the last question answered in it was, this is for a weeknight, not a weekend thing, and I said, yeah, definitely a weekday thing.
Yes.
And so, the, the thought was that it would take place in one of the, either the first or second week of March, on a weeknight, and just, you know, whoever, if anyone has dates during those two weeks, if they can't do it, other than, you know, what posted meeting nights are, then we'll, we'll try and schedule something during that time, but, you know, there were some other questions as to who would be invited and who would participate, you know, because you guys were, we were all at the one that we did in November, and, you know, who was invited and who participated wasn't exactly what the original thought was. So, you know, that meeting was kinda hijacked for one specific topic, and we're looking to try and, at least I'm looking to not have that happening, and there's too many topics to discuss, so, that's something that, you know, but, once we get to date, we'll kind of figure out the ground rules of it, and who's invited, and who's, you know, who's participating, I don't think it's an audience participation event, it's the seventeen people invited to discuss it, and others are welcome to come and listen, but it's not really a free-for-all like it was the last time, because it turned into a three and a half hours of listening to people talking about the same thing for three and a half hours.
Mr. Chairman, were you, were you kind of thinking about the library again, and having a similar setup, the sort of?
The library, this room, you know, wherever, we haven't decided where, but a similar setup to that.
I'm asking for preference.
Yeah, I don't have a preference, I, whatever, you know, yeah, I would think that the, the library would make more sense, but then again, this building, we don't get kicked out when the time comes, at the end of time, you know, there's a, there's no time bell here, the library, you have to leave by a certain time.
No, it is.
You know, we started.
We could probably do downstairs.
It's not a roundtable, because there's like, I know it seems odd, but it's the presence of the podium.
Yeah, Justine is right.
We could do downstairs.
We don't have to sit, we don't have to sit here either, we can, we can, we can go sit there, so we're not, we don't have the, the idea that we're somehow sitting up here, I understand what you're saying.
Set it up like EDC does.
We can sit this up, we can sit this up in a square too.
Or downstairs, that's right.
Any, any place is fine, but, you know, the library would be great, but I don't, I don't know if we, so if we start at, we usually start at seven, you know, but we, so we usually start at seven.
What happens if it runs into ten?
If he tells we gotta leave at nine, we might not be done in two hours, given the, you know, the amount of information, and, and kind of the gravity of the conversation, what's expected, what's expected is gonna probably carry on a little longer than two hours, regardless of where we are, so.
Okay.
But, but anyway, so that was the, that was, we had that conversation, so, I'll send out an email tomorrow, because we just kinda, I think, when was that, that email was today, was it? The, I think that, that last email went today, where it was.
Today, or over the weekend night.
Where it was, was it a weekend thing, and not a weekend thing, and I said, no, I don't have Saturday available for weeks.
Would you like me to set the poll?
Oh, good lord, no.
I mean, it's not, like, I can do a quick survey, Justin's saying, no.
Well, no, it doesn't matter.
I'll let you do the administrative work if you want.
No, that's fine, and you want, like a survey monkey thing, is that what you're saying?
I'm, I'm asking to, as
I can do it, I can do, I can do it, I can do it, don't worry about it, I'll do it, it's not a problem.
Want to set a date?
I'll let you do it.
It's fine, I'll do it.
Basically, I think if you just send an email to everybody and say,
That's what it's gonna be, give us, give us the blackout date, right. What dates can't you do?
Sure, it's easy.
As long as you post it on time.
I always have problems with those survey monkeys, because my calendar is on the same thing with my, where my, the thing is, we have to switch back, okay, that date's available, that date's not.
So anyway, so now it's, it's, we go back to the, we're actually in line for your town administrator report.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
No, but I thought, I thought it was appropriate to ship your stuff, but, so, again, I encourage the public to look at the town administrator's report, it's not, not the longest this week, so, some good pictures in there, and I appreciate the, the department heads that, that contribute pretty regularly, like Amy Levels with the council on aging, I love her all the pictures she does, also with Chief being, he wanted vacation last week, so I filled in some stuff in the police department. I also wanna point out.
The sustainability committee?
There's a sustainability.
Yeah, I was gonna say, can, can you share a little bit about what that is?
So Kate Wheeler, resident Kate Wheeler came to me about, actually, two different groups, one is the tree committee, which is actually chaired by the tree warden, Justin DeMarco, the DBW director, just because as we get, you know, whether it be site plans, or whatever, and, and it, that, it's a working group, so it's a town administrator-appointed body that is supposed to advise the tree warden for the tree committee, but I'm mentioning that because Kate Wheeler had also advocated for that, that's where her name had come up otherwise. For the sustainability committee, Kate Wheeler approached me asking for my support and her proposal for some sort of group to help kind of be the advocacy amongst all the towns' plans, whether it be master plan, open space recreation, green communities programming, capital improvement plan, we're also doing the municipal vulnerability program right now, and so she felt that there was a need for residents to advise town staff on the interrelationship of all these different plans. I don't really have any objections to it, if she wants to volunteer to do it, I'm happy to have some, some outside advice. If the board, so I'm, as, as the chief administrative officer and the town administrator, I am allowed to appoint, as I've done in the past, ad hoc working group, if, as long as it's not through initiative of the board of selectmen, which it's not, and so I wanted to keep it more at the staff level, because they really are advising the staff on how to implement the master plan, open space. That's, that's the, I welcome Kate Wheeler trying to.
So, I mean, I, I understand that part, I'm just trying to figure this thing out, because the master plan is gonna have their own.
So they are also proposing a what's next.
What's next committee, which is, or, that is part of what they're proposing, and they approached you on that, and how that works.
So this is how, this is.
So that's how, I'm having, you know the old saying, too many chefs in the kitchen?
I get it, I'm also, I am hesitant to turn away, when, when someone like Kate Wheeler says I wanna help, I, I do.
Of course, of course.
Isn't Kate's idea more along the line of, relative, specifically to sustainability, relative to green, green initiatives?
Right, that's what I thought it was. Right, right. That's what I thought it was.
And, you know, I highly encourage the community to be involved in, uh, you know, making sure that when a project comes before us, that there are people that are advocating for green aspects of that, of that development. That's what I, I believe that she wants to do. When, you know, when somebody comes in and they, you know, okay, well, let's make sure that you have, uh, that, that we advocate for solar at that particular location, or, you know, whatever it happens to be. So, I, I think what she wants to do is, is important, and I think that we should encourage it, because it's, you know, it's a different set of eyes looking at issues that may be beyond what we normally would look at.
Right.
And I, I, I actually think that there should be some level of, of, of.
Oversight?
Of a green plan for all of our planning going forward. I think there should be something in the, in the planning boards.
And I'm not disagreeing with you, but this is over here. What I'm reading is a lot more than, uh, what you're pointing out.
She wants to, so, I, it is a lot. Let me, let me break it down a little bit per plant, right? So, for the master plan, which I'm glad you brought up, not, the master plan is, is pretty widespread.
Right.
There is aspects, the, the capital portions, the building portions, the maintenance portions, that are green-related or sustainable-related. Sustainable also, though, relates to trash and recycling collection. It relates to, um, I don't know, just, there's, future planning is, is, but also regular planning and whatnot. So, that, it's, it is helpful to have a group to kind of bounce stuff off of. That way, it's not just the, it's not just the bottle that it can be town hall sometimes, where we all kind of, we all talk to each other all the time. It's helpful.
Outside, yeah, yeah.
Do we have, and forgive me for not knowing this, do we have, um, a green communities committee?
We do, as a requirement of the grant.
Okay.
So, they, they only meet in regards to the, like, when we apply, it requires endorsement. That application has to be endorsed by a green communities committee.
Right.
They don't meet very regularly.
But couldn't they do what?
Oh, I think they're more.
Yes, you're right. So, so in some, so in some communities, you have just a green communities committee.
Yep, that just handles the.
My understanding is that, that the current committee was not, there weren't, they weren't anything more than just the grant application.
Okay. That's, that's our, our green communities, uh, com- uh, committee. The way I've observed it is more or less just applying for grants. They've been very successful at doing it.
Absolutely.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
And, um, and making sure that the, the, um, you know, whatever they are, LED lights get put in the proper way and everything else, and we, we make sure that there are LED lights at the high school. I think the, um, the initiative that Kate has is much wider and more.
That's what I'm saying.
More impactful relative to, specifically to development and the way that we move forward as a community relative to sustainability, um, from an energy standpoint.
Okay.
And.
So, another committee, another town, they have an energy committee. So, but, but, but it's very, it, it, just as the title alludes, it's very specific to building energy. But I like the sustainability that it's a little more wi- I mean, it's open space recreation, too. Like, it's a little more widespread.
So, who do they report to?
Me.
They're an advisory group with Greg.
Bingo. So, they have to be appointed every year. But, I mean, that also allows that if, if she wanted a lot of people on this committee, which I also, I don't mind. So, but it also allows some flexibility. We can change the membership. It also means that they're not as strict. As a town administrator working group, as they are, they're just, the title has to, their ha- title happens to be committee. But as a, as a working group, um, they're not as strictly subject to open meeting law. So, although I always recommend to all committees, working group or otherwise, to post their meetings publicly, have a webpage, all that.
Well, we, we, yeah.
It allows them to be more flexible. We also don't have a budget, so they'll do as much as they can, but it's more advisory.
Okay.
Alright, no, if, unless you have any other questions, Mr. Chairman.
No, I totally interpret you, so.
I wasn't done. I, um, the town clerk was a little late with her submission with the, with the, um, um, town administration report, uh, department, uh, submission. So, she wanted to point out, though, that, um, early voting is occurring next week. And, um, so we'll have some parking spaces out back, uh, for folks. But, you know, she'll be, she'll be here. The, I think this room is the polls. So, if you want to early vote, come next week.
Okay. Alright, so, I, I talked about the, um, tribal meeting. The only other thing that I have this week is that, um, last Tuesday, I believe, while you guys were up here talking about soccer fields and mowers, I was downstairs with Megan, and we were listening to the, um, conversation between the, uh, planning board members and, um, town, the town, um, planner and Wayne, Wayne Town Engineer and, um, Rick Asman and, uh, representation of, um, from the De Petri Capital Group, talking about, uh, working on holidays and whatnot at, um, at, you know, Maynard Crossing and naturally, you know, they promised it would never happen again and everything else. They were gonna apply for, um, you know, apply for their variations. If they had variations in the, in the future, they would apply before the date and make sure that they had permission to be where they were, where, when it was out of, outside the scope and hours that they're allowed under the, um, special permits and the MOA and any of those types of things. And so, it was an interesting conversation. Um, and then there was some, there were, you know, the takeaways were that they were gonna work together better, try and work together better to ma- ensure that, um, none of the neighbors were being upset and, um, you know, having people working when they weren't supposed to be working. The town did, did issue them their first fine, and the first fine that anyone in the town government can remember for thirty-plus years for type of thing. But, um, and there was some discussion this, and it's, I think it's kind of, I guess, Megan, you could agree and disagree. Kind of things to be determined how those things would be going moving forward, how, how the fines would be assessed or not assessed, and how, um, you know, how that would take place.
So, I do have to say that I worked on Monday. You guys putting the electronic board sign there.
That was very impressive.
Oh, that's not ours.
Oh, oh, that was, oh, that was their sign? I thought that was a town sign.
So, we had the conversation.
Oh.
We had the conversation earlier about not being there Monday, you mean?
Yeah.
So, we had the conversation, Megan and I and Greg, and I said, did you go by Monday to see if they're working? Because I wasn't going.
No, it wasn't. They weren't working.
I, but I was very impressed with your sign.
It was quiet.
That was their sign.
Yeah.
Their sign. I thought it was ours.
So, anyway, there's, so they, it was a, it was a, I mean, it was overall, I think it was a, a positive meeting in that, you know, everybody kind of got to say what they wanted to say, um, and agreed that, you know, agreed, agreed that there were some mistakes made and that they're gonna work together to try and correct the mistakes going forward. And that was it? Anything, Almond, tonight?
Um, yeah, a couple of things. One, and, um, Megan was there, obviously, for the EDC meeting, and I think you put that on your report briefly. We were, um, thank you again for inviting Jim Vazza. He's the, uh, capital planning, uh, group leasing, leasing manager. And, um, everybody felt like it was a breath of fresh air in comparison to what we hear from Mill and Main, uh, talking about, uh, being collaborative and, um, working together with the town, uh, to get things done. And there, and, um, I, I guess, from my perspective, the way I see it, they're moving along, and there's a few things that are going on in the development in that area that they need to re-figure things and re, rethink some of the things about what they're doing. They're approaching a couple of the buildings there. Uh, but all in all, they're moving along, and a lot of the, uh, projects are coming on, online, uh, fast. And, uh, we, I was impressed to hear that the, um, uh, Camilla Gardens is already eighty percent, I believe, uh, so it's unbelievable. So, how fast it's moving. Thirty percent on, on the view. Um, so, anyway, but I was, I was, uh, impressed, my, personally, I was impressed with Jim, his approach, his style and personality. And I think he, you know, he went a long way with the, with the EDC committee, and I, I felt, I felt very good about it. Uh, the other piece, and I think we talked about this in the past, and, uh, we both attended MMA Conference, and, um, I think they made a decision. They took a vote to change the actual name of the, uh, selectmen to select, uh, board. And from what I understand, there's about eighty-five towns now that already have changed that name. And I just wondered whether or not, um, something we should be thinking about, talking about, and finding what the process is to, to make that happen.
No, I thi- I think this is from all over the past, and I think it's, it's, um, the answer is the, uh, charter review. So, every ten years, the charter has to be reviewed. And, and so, the, the title, you know, you start at the top, start at the, what it, how it says in the charter, and then we can change the bylaws after that.
And there, and the charter review is up now, right?
I think we're with the, so, uh, town moderator proposed that we start the process over the summer.
Perfect.
We're just, we're trying to figure out whether we need an article, a town meeting or not.
So, we don't know that, does it need to be voted on by town meeting?
Yes. Well, a change to the charter.
Charter, yeah, when you change the charter, yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
So, it's, so it's.
So, it's gonna take about a year.
It requires two-thirds, but it's, it's, um, you can amend it, the charter at any time. It just, you don't have to just, it doesn't have to be amended only when it is.
The charter review, okay.
When it is annual, you know, the dec, whatever it is for de- the decade.
Yeah.
Um, you can, you can amend it at any time with a two-thirds majority vote. So, but, to do that, and I support doing it, because it's, you know, that's, I think it's the, the words that are being used by everybody. But to do it everywhere in the charter that selectmen appears needs to be changed. So, it takes work. It's not just a simple, let's do it. You can say, let's have, okay, everybody, let's make, let's call it the select board. That's great. But to really make it official, we'd require that the charter be changed to everywhere that shows up, it's, it shows up. And, I mean, I, certainly, I, I, there's no reason not to do it. It's just, it's just an issue of.
What difference does it make when anyone calls us in that regard, right? I mean, but the other question is, now, if we do it in a change in charter, do we have to change bylaws?
Yes, so.
So, in where the bylaws, it, I mean, okay, so, to David's point, it, would we have to, I mean, when we're changing.
We have to change the name tag. We have to change it.
Right. No, no, but we're changing, we're changing very minor things in, in some of, um, Bill Coleman's updates every, every, every.
Well, the bylaws change every year.
But, but Bill is changing those constantly.
Yeah.
And my question is, throughout our bylaws, the, the word selectmen appear.
Probably.
In, in reference to this body. So, do we have to then, would he have to then go review the bylaws?
I think, I think you could probably, yeah, I do. I think you could probably just say, you can make a motion to the town meeting that says wherever the word selectmen appears in the bylaws will now be shifted to be, uh.
Select boards.
Select board.
You may not even need to, because the bylaws may be, like, I don't think you could have a bylaw that conflicts with the town charter anyways. So, if you change a charter, that implies that the bylaws have to change. But either way, we can spell that out.
I mean, it's, it's.
I, I watched when, when Littleton, I mean, I've told you this before. I'm, I'm a nerd with this shit, but excuse my mic. Cut it out.
Normally.
But I, you know, I watched when, when, I think it was Littleton, when Littleton did this, the same thing. I think it was Littleton.
That wasn't me.
Might have been Boxborough. Might have been Boxborough.
Boxborough did it, Concord did it.
The debate that they had over the way that, that it read in certain, because. They had debate because it said, like, they, you know, instead of they, they wanted to change it to be, it's some other descriptive word. And it was like, when the board of selectmen, or when the select board does something, they, and it's like, well, you know, it has to be, it was incredible, the, the amount of debate that went into it.
Get into that a little detail, but.
Well, oh, oh, yeah.
When they refer to the chairman, it can't refer to he. It has to be referred to as the.
Oh, the chair.
Well, no, no, but it just, it just, I think, I think it just says chair.
Chair.
Just, just the word chair.
It should. It should.
But I, I, I mean, I don't, it certainly is, certainly is something that's, but, no, no. What, Mike?
Question, now, when we do an award article this year, do you put selectmen or the selectmen?
No, because we haven't.
We can't change it. No.
Until the vote takes.
Everything's, everything's the same until the char- so, if the charter review, if the charter review was this summer, we'll let them suggest whatever change, you know.
And the, and the reason I'm bringing it up, because I know it's a process. So, that's, I mean, what's the, what is the, you know, where's the process starting, you know?
So, it, so it may start with what you've just said. You've given me direction to, to draft an article that we'll present to you and have Lisa check it over.
So, in the meantime, is it appropriate for us to, is it appropriate for us to, you know, refer to us as select board, or no? We can, right?
Why not?
So, we could do that from our, it's not official.
Not changing any documents until it's official.
Well, I, I, I just don't know, I, I, I mean, if we have to change it legally in the charter, why we would, you know, if we're gonna call ourselves something different, why would we wait until we do it correctly and officially before we do it? We can, I mean, you know, I, I don't think it, yes.
Yeah, from.
Chumford had the same thing. They did, they took a vote earlier. They put it as a warrant item, so when they had the review of their charter, it was already approved by the town.
That's what did, yeah, I got that part.
Two-thirds, already, that way it's ahead, because you're doing it this summer to review, so.
But I don't, I don't.
You know, we could do it in the fall if we have a special time meeting.
I don't have a problem with whatever we call ourselves, but you know that if we go and change it, and we start referring to ourselves as certain, certain names.
And we're not.
And we're not.
We will have those that are the charter nerds that will call us out. So, I don't, I don't, I mean, I think it's, you know, we, we've talked about it a bunch. We've heard people come in, suggest we do it, and there's no objection from any, I don't, doesn't sound like there's any objection. But I just, we just have to make sure we do it correctly, because we do have those that, uh, cause on every little misstep.
Yep.
But, um.
Mr. Gavin?
Good point.
Uh, yeah, getting back to the discussion that we had last Thursday, whatever night it was, on the Recreation Commission. And the whole issue with the new Fowler field that will be not coming online until, what, spring of, not this coming spring, but next spring or sometime, long off. Uh, but the issue of maintaining it is, uh, a concern, and we, obviously, we don't want to have done all this work to have it fail on us. But the whole, there was, there was discussion about this need for a, a proper mower.
Yeah.
For the, for athletic use.
Right.
And, uh, does the golf course have a mower that they would be able to lend to allow us to mow?
They may, but I doubt that they would.
Yeah, but I think, I, I think Justin referred to that, that it's a different type of what, what they use there is different than what the soccer fields need. I'm not, I'm not sure.
I mean, even if it's just to carry us over so that we have what we need to, to drive it down the road like the guy in the movies do.
So, that the golf course is two types of mowers. There's a, a roller mower. There's several different roller mowers, which is the type, which is a fairway and fairways and greens type of thing in surrounds. And then there's a, then there's a rough mower, which is just exactly like the mower you push around the yard.
Right.
With, you know, spin blade, suck it up and cut it. But I don't know.
And I thought it was, what he was saying was specific to soccer fields.
I think it's kind of, I think what they use is kind of a hybrid of the two.
Yes.
Because of the height. It's a specific height.
Because you have to adjust it to, to different.
I don't know, but, um, I, I, you know, after the meeting, I, I was only caught the end of it, because I was downstairs. I said something to Justin, and I mean, it seemed to me that, you know, maintenance never really came up as a, a, a part of the discussions. And I look back, and I didn't see any of the notes that were in the minutes of the previous discussions with those guys.
That's what surprised me, too.
But anyways, but it kind of was, you know, it's a town field. I would just assume that we're not gonna hire a special group to come and cut that one field, that it would be assumed by the same people that were doing the past.
That's the biggest gap.
Isn't there, isn't maintaining a field part of the school budgets?
No.
So, no, but so they, so we, we have, so Mark Courier is the foreman of the, of the grounds, like, the, the Parkland Grounds crew. And he does all the field maintenance. Some of the expenses may be covered by some of the fees that the school department charges. Um, but it's not, not a lot of fees there, and it's just not, it's not, it's not enough to handle eighteen thousand dollars here for certain. And so, it will fall back to just the regular schedule. I'm not sure what promises were made or, or what, or what handshakes were made between the Recreation Commission and, and the town regarding what maintenance may be fulfilled. I suppose that there was some sort of conversation of that. I know I probably would have, if I, I'm surprised if I didn't, um, when I, when I endorsed the application, if I, if I was allowed to endorse it to the CPC, because I would have said, who's gonna pay for the maintenance? Usually CPC says that, too. So, I guess, I guess it might have been satisfactory that it would just fall back on the Mark Courier crew and his schedule as he gets throughout to all the fields as he can. But if there was an understanding that the town will or would invest in a mower to help support that, so be it.
Because it's, it's more than just, based on the discussion, it's more than just mowing the grass. You, they, there is consistent, proper fertilization and.
It's a commitment.
You know, watering and, you know, they use different.
Different type of mix of grass seeds.
Grass seed for the edges versus the middle. I mean, it was, this is the science. And I mean, the guy who was here, you know, he went to school for it. And, uh, so, I do think we had a discussion about the maintenance of the field, but I think it was sort of one of those things where, you know.
Well, we didn't realize it was eighteen thousand dollars.
About getting the field, and they were, they were able to come up with the money to get it done. I think the maintenance issue had come up, but it was totally lost on the excitement.
Hmm.
And that's part of, that's, that's on us, and it's, it's, um, you know, and I think it's a lesson learned for the future when we start to approve something. For example, this bell, you know, you put a bell out there, suddenly, are we gonna have to be out, having somebody out cleaning it every, you know, every month?
Yeah, so I hope not. So, I.
That's.
We had that, we, to your point, we had the exact same conversation. I had that conversation with, with Justin within the last two weeks about the banners, the hometown.
That's right, because that's gotta be maintained, too.
Conversation was, Justin, once we get them up, how much is it gonna be, you know, to maintain these annually, and, and is it something that your department can do? And it's clearly something they can do.
Same with the.
He said the first couple of years, it's a minimal amount of maintenance, but he said, you know, as time goes on, they break and you're gonna replace them, and that's, that's the upkeep and.
And we have a skeleton crew, so that's why, one of the reasons why we don't have trash cans on every mower in town, because we don't have the people to go around and take the trash everywhere. It's, it's a, we're, we're a city with this town worth of staff, so.
But I also think, though, that's, that that was, and, and to David's point, and, um, you know, I, I, it probably, and I don't remember the conversations regarding the maintenance, but I think that it was pretty much the, it will be maintained like we maintain all the other fields. But it was unanticipated that there was gonna be this much of a cost associated with maintaining that field. And, and I completely understand, and I said this to the Recreation Department, Recreation Commission afterwards, that, you know, one thing that everybody was saying was, if we don't maintain it to this standard, it won't last as long, it will go, it will go away faster and, and everything else. And, and I, I basically said to them, I said, you have justified all of our roads, all of our capital equipment, all of our buildings, all of our fields. I, that, that, that is pretty much where we are. And as, as selectmen, we look at it from the entire picture of every need there is in town. And, you know, we. And, you know, we do wanna help as much as we can, but sometimes we can't fund everything to the nth degree of what it should, according to consultants, be funded to, so.
Yeah, I also think that down the road, I'm, I know they have a plan about raising some money through marketing or, you know, sponsorships and all that, so that'll be.
They raised that point, but there apparently are some legal issues with advertising on school property.
With the school. So they're gonna look, reach out to the school committee to find out how that works.
It's funny, though, because Alumni Field, is Alumni Field not owned by the school?
Yeah, no, I was gonna say, yeah, yeah.
No, you can, you can have to.
On the, on the fence.
The signage is on the public side, and I think that that's significant.
You just have to offer it publicly, so you can't, you can't just approach, you, you know, it has to be any of a procurement. And so you're, you're offering a service, you're offering a, kind of a lease of a school property or town property, and, um, you just offer it, you just like go out to bid and people bid on it. It's not that complicated.
Okay.
Anything else, Steve?
No.
Justine?
Uh, just a couple of quick questions, a couple of quick things, we're, um, Budget Subcommittee is still meeting, uh, we're gonna be meeting next Thursday, uh, at seven o'clock somewhere in Town Hall, not sure yet where yet. Um, this will be our first meeting fro- since the, uh, February eighth meeting, um, and we're just looking to keep honing in on everything and talking to both Finance Committee, School Committee, and, and see where we all are, um, moving forward. Um, the other, it's kind of a question slash comment, um, it's actually about one twenty-nine. And there is a, there is a construction, there is a flag light, um, that is, apparently, it's lighting the American flag that is now up in, at one twenty-nine Parker. But the way it shines is actually basically onto twenty-seven, so it basically shines in the windows of like two or three houses that are along twenty-seven. Um, and I'm just wondering if there's any, I, I realize it's not a big deal, but I'm just wondering if there's a way that they can just angle it up, so it lights the flag as opposed to just lighting.
That's Molly's nightlight, so if you turn it.
Well, I, it was off for the longest time, because there wasn't a flag there, now there's a flag, but I drive in, I, so I leave at five in the morning, and, and it's, it's very bright.
Okay, alright.
So I was just curious. Um, again, not the end of the world, but I just figured it was worth an ask.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's all.
They wanna be good neighbors, they say.
I, and that's, like I said, you know, I, I looked at the flag at Alumni Field, and, and that one's lit from underneath.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, so.
In a, in a different way, like on another school.
And it's not even actually, I mean, you can kinda see it, I mean, it's not, the flag's not actually really lit to its potential, so I'm not quite sure what it, so. And is it permanent? I guess that's the other question I had, or is it just during the construction?
I don't know.
The flag, and the, I think it's permanent.
It's permanent, okay.
The light, the light might be temporary, but I don't know.
Well, the light has to be permanent if the flag is, has to be.
Yeah, I'll check in with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, by the way, also brought up.
A lot of people pay attention to that, really, a lot of dark flags around here.
The, the flag was torn, and I think Justin was gonna replace it, the, at the Alumni Field.
Oh, really?
They're not gonna replace that, that's, that's like, that's a really expensive.
Well, he told me there's two different flags they put up, he said one they put up for the winter and.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they, they, um, they sewed the, right before Veterans Day, um, they had taken it down and they sewed it up, because it had been ripped.
Okay.
And I was told at the Veterans Day Parade by Ed Sokolowski, that they were actually going to replace the flag, and he said they were gonna put up a smaller one for the winter because of the, the heavy winds, but they never did it.
He said he, they did.
So maybe they did, and it's.
Yeah, alright.
Okay.
Sorry, Justine.
Oh, no, no, I'm done.
She's had her say this evening.
Come on!
Okay, so, um, make a, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.